Good afternoon, Chatham. Welcome to the March 11, 2025, meeting of the Chatham Select Board. Please note, this meeting is being recorded and will be available shortly hereafter for scheduled and on-demand viewing on any smartphone or tablet device. If anyone else is recording the meeting, please notify the Chair. Seeing no such notification, I'll proceed pursuant to Governor Healy's March 29, 2023 signing of the Acts of 2023, extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency, suspending certain provisions of the Open Meeting Law, General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20. Until March 31, 2025, this meeting of the Chatham Select Board is being conducted in person and via remote participation. Every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings as provided for in the order. A reminder that persons who would like to listen to this meeting while in progress may do so by calling the phone number 1-508-945-4410, Conference ID 203386491, pound sign, or join the meeting online via Microsoft Teams through the link in the posted agenda. While this is a live broadcast and simulcast on Chatham TV, Xfinity, Channel 1072, despite our best efforts, we may not be able to provide real-time access. We will post a record of this meeting on the town's website as soon as possible. With that, the first order of business is establishing a quorum. Ms. Davis?
Present.
Mr. Schell is present. Mr. Nacastro?
Present.
Okay, we have a streamlined team tonight. Our agenda tonight consists of one set of minutes, January 28. We have some public announcements and agenda item requests. Number three is a public hearing to consider an application to transfer and pledge, to transfer and the pledge of the annual wine and malt beverages, only package store license from Chatham Market to the new owner of Chatham Village Market, CVM Retail. Then, next will be a report from our monthly report from our Director of Public Works, Rob Failey, on Chatham Wells, PFAS, drinking water, et cetera. Next is public comments on our business agenda. And then our business agenda consists of three big headings and then 10 little ones under item number two. First, we're gonna vote to ratify two collective bargaining agreements with the Chatham Municipal Employees Association and the Chatham Managers Association. Next, we have a number of town meeting articles to review and consider voting to place and recommend. I'm not gonna go through those. We have a total of 10, including a couple of home rule petitions and a couple of petition, at least one petition article. So with that, I will take a motion on the minutes.
Second.
Any comments? Dean, go ahead.
Thank you. I don't have any edits, but there were several places where I think some language was missing. You have already caught them, Kathy. On page five, or maybe you, Mr. Chair, page five up at the top, that paragraph that trails over and does, is lacking something at the end. And then on page eight, same thing with the paragraph that runs over from the prior page after the phrase "the current fleet." I think there's something missing there. And then in the next paragraph, last line, "training for period." Something's missing there. Do you see that?
Before, if I may, I think it's "training for it" and then the period.
Okay. And then finally, on page 13, maybe there isn't anything here. Under D, she also noted that there were deceased birds. Is that the end, meant to be the end of it? Period? I don't know. All right. Okay, that's it.
So I had those, but I wanted, if you go back to page eight, the carryover paragraph, the last lines where it says "police department staffing the current fleet," there's something missing there as well. So with those proposed amendments, all in favor, Mr. Nacastro?
Aye.
Mr. Schell says aye. Ms. Davis?
Stain.
Okay. Next, public announcements and agenda item requests. Do we have any of those from the board? I know Paulette Faillig is online and would like to make an announcement. Welcome, Paulette. You have the floor.
Hi, thank you. Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Hi, good evening. I'm Paulette Faillig from Chatham Recycles, here to announce our 13th Annual Book and Media Swap. I think the flyer is up. There it is. It will be not this weekend, but next weekend, March 22 and 23, from 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. And we ask that people bring the three days before the event, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, from 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. Books, CDs, DVDs, VHS tapes, cassette tapes, vinyl records, puzzles, as long as they're cardboard puzzles. And to please bring no more than two sturdy bags or boxes from your home per visit. And then please come for the weekend to join us. Please do not bring to drop off any items, any moldy books, any encyclopedias, or any related items like cases or shelving or anything. We just want the media itself. So I think that's it. Unless anybody has any questions, we'd love to see you. Oh, it's in the annex. It's in the small conference room, right next to the room you're in now. And we'd love to have you.
Thank you, and look forward to it. Any other public announcements and/or agenda item requests? I don't see anybody here in the room, anybody online. I don't see anybody there either. Do you, Jill? No? Okay. We have a public hearing. Shereen, would you read the notice?
Certainly. Town of Chatham Select Board Public Hearing Notice. Notice is hereby given that the Chatham Select Board will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, March 11, 2025, at 5:30 p.m. in a large meeting room at the Town Hall Annex 261 George Ryder Road, Chatham, and remotely via Microsoft Teams platform, to consider the transfer and pledge of the annual wine and malt beverage-only package store license from Chatham Market, Inc., doing business as Chatham Village Market. Stamashia McDonald, Manager of CVM Retail, Inc., doing business as Chatham Village Market. Harsh Patel, Manager for the Business Located at 20 Queen Anne Road. All interested parties are encouraged to participate. Sign the Select Board.
So do we have Mr. Patel here in the room? Welcome. If you would step up to the podium and introduce yourself. And it's my understanding, or at least I'm advised, that your attorney, Ms. Wegman, is also online?
Yeah, she's on the Zoom call.
Okay.
Hi, Board.
Thank you. Hello, Select Board of Chatham. My name is Harsh, and I'm the proposed manager of the Beer and Wine License for CVM Retail, Inc., DBA Chatham Village Market. At Chatham Village Market, our goal will be to ensure our staff and management team are knowledgeable of alcohol laws and identifying when it's not okay to sell, and focusing on age verification. We will put in place a training protocol at the front end to ensure we are dealing with the sales of beer and wine responsibly. I can understand that this is probably a big change in town, given the history of the market. The community is who the market has to thank for, thank for even being around today. And being community-centric has always been a big proponent for the market, and we will continue to do our best to uphold that. And we plan to keep all the same offerings, all the quality products, and the friendly faces in the store the same. I think the current owners and management have done a great job in building the market into what it is today, and we don't plan on changing anything. And we want to improve where we can and offer some additional offerings that would work well, and I think the town will really appreciate, and really making it more of a full-service grocery store. Being the only grocery store in town, I want to make sure the year-rounders and locals feel that it's the full-service, one-stop shop that emphasizes quality and remains competitively priced with the big-box chains. As a customer, you shouldn't recognize any changes in your visit, and in fact, one of the current owners will be staying on for a good period of time to help with the transition, so nothing's disrupted. And I look forward to being in Chatham.
Thank you. Anything from your lawyer before I ask for questions here?
Wow. No, I think I'm all set. We'll just take any questions that anyone has.
Okay. I guess I'll open it to the public for questions, this being a public hearing, before I offer it to the board. Anybody here? Yes, sir. Mr. Phillips?
How are you? Brian Phillips, 374 Orleans Road. So I deliver newspapers every day for like six months at Demo's dense public market. You own that too, right?
Yeah.
Well, they do a great job there, and nothing's really changed since it changed ownership. So I just like to put that out there. Thanks.
Thank you. Anybody else here? How about the board? Dean, go ahead. Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Shereen.
I'm in favor of the transfer of the license and approving the license. I just want to say welcome to Chatham, and we look forward to seeing you and your crew around the neighborhood. So, thank you.
Thank you. Look forward to being here.
Dean?
Thank you. I want to echo those comments, and I'm glad that it's remaining in market. We almost lost the market one time. And it's been, it's an institution in Chatham. I just had a question really for this, for, I don't see Shauna on. Is she not here? So Kathy, maybe you can get these answered. In the application, this is the first time I've seen a yes on this question. Will the landlord receive revenue based on a percentage of alcohol sales? I was, I would have asked Shauna how common that is in town. It's not a problem for me. I just wondered. I hadn't seen that before. Do you know, Jill?
I do. I think it was for the business that predated branches, I believe. But we can get that information.
Okay. And the other, I didn't see included the two signature pages. One is a long list of assertions that the applicant signs. It's a form, and then there is usually a corporate vote form, which I don't see. But I'm sure Shauna must have those. But...
Yeah, she has, she has both. If they're not in there, it's an error, but I can, I can double-check with her.
That's right. I just want to make sure they're in the, they're in the file. But no, I'm very happy. I see you're taking a 30-year lease. Are you, you kind of alluded to this. Are you planning on keeping on many or most of the employees?
Yeah, I plan on keeping whoever, hopefully everybody. I've, you know, I took over Dennis about almost three years ago, and they, you know, in the summer, we probably have a staff of about 50-something people there, but the year-round crew is about 30. And across those two and a half years, I've only had one person. And they, you know, they left because they moved. But whoever wants to stay is more than welcome to stay.
Do you live on Cape yourself?
I live in Yarmouth.
Okay, thank you. Well, welcome, and best of luck. Thank you.
Yeah, I... One, one, I'm sorry.
No, please, go ahead.
One follow-up on the revenue. The revenue percentage is actually in the current lease that the current owner has. I don't know if it was something that was flagged at the time that they got their license, but it's, we're taking an assignment of that lease, so we're subject to that provision, as much as I don't love it either.
So just to follow up to that question, you say you're taking an assignment to the lease, but it's also an extension?
It's an amendment on top of the assignment.
Amendment and assignment.
Yep. There's an overage, so over the overage of revenue, not just liquor or beer, wine, but total revenue, which is...
No, that, that doesn't come as any surprise. I was just curious to know whether you were the, I saw that, as did Dean, the 30-year lease, and I assume, if, and then the comment was made that, that it's an extension. I assume it's, it's an extension to get you to 30 if it's taking over the lease. That's all.
Right.
Yeah, and Shauna, Shauna should have a copy of that, as well as the existing lease. It's, it's an assignment assumption and amendment to extend the lease out that far.
Okay, good. So back to employees for a minute. How many employees are there?
In the winter, there's about 40. In the summer, with your, all your summer help, your J1s, J2Bs, it's about 75 to 80.
And, and so, but you're, you're gonna make an attempt to keep everybody around that, particularly the full-time people?
Yeah, I mean, it's, I can't be everywhere at once. I, I have another store in Connecticut, which I have 75 employees at, so, you know, I can't be at Connecticut, Dennis and Chatham at the same time, so I really rely on and take care of, you know, of those people.
So you mentioned one of the owners is gonna stick around for a transition.
So Jim and Bob, I don't know how familiar you are with the current owners.
I'm gonna get to that in a minute, but go ahead.
Yeah, so Jim and Scott is gonna be retired, or all three of them are gonna be retiring, but Bob is gonna stick around, and Bob's son is gonna be, you know, he, he's gonna be very involved in staying on for the, for the long run. And Jim is gonna be on to get me through the summer and be, they're, they're very hands-on and involved in the day-to-day, so it's, so it's, it was never owner-absentee run, so it's just to get through the winter and, I mean, the start of the summer, and just the timing of it is not, it's kind of happening at a time where it's, the summer is right there, and it's not gonna be the easiest transition, but you know, it's, it is where it is with how, you know, we were hoping it'd probably be closer to, you know, February, or March, where we'd have some time to transition and not jump right into the summer, but it is where it is, so.
Yeah, and that was really the thrust of my question, was I know you have, I don't know them personally, but I know that they have been active and on the floor all the time, and obviously you're gonna have to replace that as you go forward. So I wish you well on that. I'll also say that my wife is on a first-name basis with many of the employees there, so I'll be hearing about it. So I wish you well and look forward to your being very successful.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Anything else from anybody else? I'll take a mo, are we closing, or are we, are we making a motion?
Corey's not here. We can do whatever we want. I move to close the hearing.
Okay, I'll second that. All in favor, Mr. Nacastro?
Aye.
Mr. Schell says aye. Ms. Davis?
Aye.
And now I'll take a motion to approve.
I move approval of the license application.
Second.
All those in favor, Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Schell says aye, and Mr. Nacastro.
Aye.
You're good. Good luck. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Mr. Failey.
Good evening.
Welcome.
Rob Failey, Director of Public Works. If you bear with me for a moment, I've, I've received some comments that maybe some of my reports, some of the text is difficult to see on the screen, so I'm trying a slightly different format today. See if you like it. It's, it's not the same format as you see in your agenda packet, but it's just, it's a simple kind of PowerPoint that just, you know, I can expand some of the text, so it's a little easier for everybody to see and understand. So hopefully this works out.
You're doing great so far. We can read it.
Can you, can you see that? So this is the drinking water testing and pumping update for the month of February. Bear with me for a moment. There we go. So yeah, Chatham is, Cape Cod has been declared in a Level 2 significant drought. That happened on February 14. And even recently, this week, or was it last week, the Connecticut River Valley was declared a Level 3 drought, so this map is changing constantly. So until we start seeing some recharge and some steady rainfall across the state, we're gonna probably see this trend continuing. So we are monitoring it and, you know, taking appropriate action. So one of the things that they recommend is that we take a few proactive measures, providing timely information to residents and businesses, suggestions on reducing the overall water use, especially outdoor use, but this time of year, it's not as much of a concern as it is in the summer, and then being mindful of indoor use. So we put this out on social media, some tips for saving water, how to check for leaks in your, in your toilet or other areas, and we provide some of those rain water-saving measures at the DPW, and we even have dyes for people's toilets, so they can see if it's leaking or not. So come on down to the DPW, and we've got plenty of things to help conserve water in Chatham. So as Training Field Wells 5 and 8, the permanent treatment facility has come along very nicely. Exterior block walls are finished. There's weatherproofing on there. Just, they're getting ready for putting some brick on, the brick veneer. It'll really start taking shape at that point. This is not a really a February update. It's more of an early March update, but I felt it was important enough to share. So that temporary GAC vessel that we had to treat well 5 water over the summer, we cleaned that up, and that's been placed in the building, and we received the other three GAC filters, and they have all been installed in the building. The scale doesn't really do it justice. Those are about two-story tanks there, so, you know, it's a very tall building, and the GAC filters are in place.
Is the one on the left, the one that fell off the truck?
The one, on the picture of the four, where you can see the label, that's the one that was dropped, yeah, several years ago. But it's repaired, and it's, even when they power washed it, they couldn't find any, you know, deviation or anything. It's been repaired really well. It's holding up nicely. The Mill Pond Wells 10 and 11, we finally received the redlined conservation easement from the EEO office. Town Council is reviewing that now to make sure we are in agreement. I'm not sure how much well room we have, but we have to do our due diligence anyway. As far as the water pumping status, wells are still running three to five hours a day, and we had no low-level alarms this month. Again, water sampling, all the samples are coming back free of bacteria. A lot of routine station maintenance occurring. Any questions on this, or just keep, there's a lot of information here. System maintenance also, continuing hydrant painting. We're actually going to, even though there is a drought, we're gonna start flushing next week. We're gonna do more of an abbreviated scale to conserve as much water as we can, and really focus on those areas that there's high residents for the summertime, so where there's not a lot of winter movement of the water. So primarily areas like south of Route 28, north of 28, out on Morris Island, those areas where there's a high concentration of summer residents, we'd flush those this year at a, at a shorter period of time to try to get the results we need. So I'm sure there will be questions once we start flushing. Why are we flushing in a drought? Because we still need to maintain the health of the system at the same time. This one was a little more difficult to get on the slide, but it shows the pumping comparison from February this year to February last year. We're pretty close, one and a half million gallons shorter, but that's pretty much on line for this time of year. Again, here it is in graph form, where the pink is February of this year, and the dark blue is February of last year. You know, other than some daily fluctuations, pretty much on track with last year. And here's that same information in a bar chart form.
Rob, I'm gonna ask like a math question, because on the pumping comparison, the 29th was 100% differential between last year, and that's because it was a leap year. But when you averaged out the total, did you consider that 100% in with the average?
You know, that's a great question.
Just a thought.
And yeah, I just let the spreadsheet run, so I don't, I'm not sure.
All right, thanks. All right, thanks.
Well, just to follow that up, how, how much, on the twenty-ninth, how much was pumped last year, or do we know?
It was, uh, it was a leap year this year, so there was no February twenty-ninth this year. Oh, no, last year was, I'm sorry, it was this year.
Oh, for, okay, so basically the difference is a million as opposed to a million four eighty?
Correct.
It, it's still, we're still doing better this year than we did last year.
Nothing, nothing abnormal. And here's our, uh, the monthly pumping, pumping, uh, shows the contributions of each well throughout the month. And again, this is the, kinda shows the, the graph form, the level of effort for each well. This sheet is the year-to-date pumping. Still shows even, uh, compared month to month, uh, if we include last year and this year, so far we're still one point eight million gallons, so we are still, pretty close, pretty much right on the money. And again, this is in bar chart as well. So this is the Chatham USGS Observation Well. You still see we are, I think the ground has started to thaw. We are in a little bit of an uptick, uh, for groundwater. Um, I think, uh, we still need some rain. It's hard too early to tell if this is a, you know, the really start of the recharge or it's just a blip, it's just, it's too soon to tell, but we're heading in the right direction at least. And this is Brewster's Observation Well. Again, this is the, the bellwether for, uh, lower Cape. Again, it's just starting to tick in the right direction. Again, with the frost out of the ground, I think, um, hopefully things will start improving. And this is the five-year comparison. Again, the average is fifteen million, and our February pumping was, uh, a little over thirteen, so, um, pumping hours is pretty much right in line as well. A little bit high, but not compared to last year. And that's all I have for you. Unless you have any questions?
Questions? Okay, thanks, that, that, I, I, this is an improvement.
Okay.
That's good.
It's always a really good report, too.
Oh, Mr. Begardis, you wanna ask a question or make a comment?
Hi, Bruce Begardis, the, uh, Water and Sewer Advisory Committee. And I just wanna remind the board that, uh, in 2023, the Water and Sewer Advisory Committee, uh, came before you and provided, basically what ended up being called the Rainbow Chart, which you had indicated you would like to use as a tool, uh, for, anytime we're in a water deficiency, uh, and being at a Level Two right now, um, it's a, it would be an opportunity for you to consider using a, this as a tool, or not, but it's just, I'm here to just remind you that there is that tool.
Okay, thank you very much, appreciate it. Anybody else? Okay. Moving right along, I think next is public comments on a business agenda. Do I hear, I, the, the one thing I'm, I'm still debating what to do, and I, I think I'm gonna do both of the options I'm considering with respect to the last, um, petition article, uh, which relates to the bylaw proposal restricting the land use at, at Chatham Airport. Because that's right at the end, I'm gonna offer, um, the folks who are interested in that, the, uh, the option of speaking now if they wish, or waiting, uh, to, um, to speak at the time alongside the board at the time we take that up. So other than that, Ms., yep, Carol, go ahead. I, I tell you what, I know what you're gonna tell me. He, he will present at, um, when we, when we, when we bring that up, but I'm just saying if there's anybody who would like to make a comment to now and not wait until the last item on the agenda, they're welcome to do that, or they're welcome to do both. Okay? Yep? So.
You have a, a member on, online?
Online, Ms. Gibbs? Welcome?
Yes, thank you very much. Uh, yes, I am going to speak on this last item, the citizens' petition for the airport. I watched the Finance Committee presentation made today, so some of my comments are in response to what I believe arguments will be made tonight. Although I didn't sign the petition, over ninety residents did. A trend during this warrant process relative to citizens' petitions has been to obtain excessive legal opinions in an attempt to influence endorsement of the Select Board and the Finance Committee for placement on the warrant. This citizens' petition is the poster child for this practice. A one-page petition generated thirteen pages of legal opinion, ten pages from the, uh, Legal Counsel representing the Airport Commission, and another three pages by Town Council representing the town, both arguing against the petition. For every legal opinion presented here, one could likely find ten legal opinions that would disagree. The irony is that Chatham taxpayers are paying for these legal opinions to argue against a citizens' petition. Thirteen pages. I'd like to know how much that costs taxpayers, private citizens. Uh, we, the private citizens don't have comparable financial resources to take on this government machine. Town Council argued, quote, "The municipal law unit of the Attorney General's Office may reject it. Should such an article pass, it is probable the municipal law unit would reject it, resulting in confusion to the residents who supported it," unquote. "Chatham voters are well aware the process for any citizen petition to become a bylaw is cumbersome and may be unsuccessful. Contrary to Town Council's perception, Chatham voters are intelligent and sophisticated enough for critical thinking, able to handle possible rejection by the Attorney General, and don't need to be preemptively protected by Town Council from confusion. Citizens' petitions are right under Massachusetts General Law, Chapter Thirty-Nine, Section Ten. They're usually a last resort when issues are ignored or not adequately addressed by town government, including public safety. Sixty-three percent of all aviation accidents occur during takeoff and landing, and eighty percent are due to or contributed in part to human and pilot error. This becomes more relevant when airports are located in densely populated neighborhoods like West Chatham. Not all airports are equal, contrary to what people would say. A crash of a charter plane would be catastrophic. We've been very lucky. And we are the ones who will suffer the consequences if or when an accident does occur. Not the FAA, not MassDOT, and FAA grants our taxpayer money. The FAA and the Department of Transportation are currently under federal safety review and scrutiny. We've all recently witnessed the devastation that can occur. If this petition isn't the answer, then find the answer, rather than discrediting citizens and dismissing their concerns. Town Council also opined, quote, "You, the Select Board, may rightly reject a petition for an illegal purpose and legitimately choose to refrain from placing this article on the warrant," unquote. Citing a two thousand and five case, Valdario versus the Town of Winchester, regarded a gift to their town, the Winchester Select Board had the sole authority to accept gifts, not town meeting. Had already accepted the gift at the time of the ruling, and was why it was not placed on the warrant. Private citizens shouldn't have to fax-check citations. I disagree that the narrow ruling of Valdario warrants citing it for precedence or applicability, deeming this petition illegal. Rejecting placement of a citizens' petition on the warrant should not be considered. The final ruling should be left to the municipal law unit of the AG's office if it passes. I hope you will vote to support the rights of the citizens petitioners to have it placed on the warrant and let the merits be debated at town meeting, as has been a longstanding tradition. Thank you.
Thank you. Any others? Online, I don't see anybody here in the room, nor do I see anybody else online, do you? Okay. Moving on to the business agenda. The first item of business is considering, um, voting to ratify the two collective bargaining agreements. And we have, uh, Director of Human Resources, Megan Downey, here to present. Welcome.
Welcome, thank, thank you so much for having me. I am here because we are pleased to report that the town's negotiation efforts with two of our collective bargaining units, the Chatham Municipal Employees Association and the Chatham Managers Association, have resulted in tentative agreements for collective bargaining agreements that expired on June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. As you know, we've met and discussed strategy, and you've had a chance to review the MOAs in executive session. We're now asking that you vote to ratify or approve the memorandum of agreement and offer a motion for the collective bargaining warrant article on the twenty twenty-five annual town meeting warrant for funding cost-associated items with this ratification. It should be noted that in twenty thirteen, all of the town's unions agreed to the town's local municipal revenue growth factor, which is a formula that provides for an annual cost of living based on the local or Chatham economic performance by certain indicators, as received each fall to be calculated for the following fiscal year. The formula for FY twenty-six provides for a three percent cost of living increase to the compensation plan as it's based on non-tax revenues received as of October twenty-four. Both the local municipal revenue growth factor and the anniversary step date increases are included in the annual budget for the, under the Town Operating Budget Warrant Article. T tentative agreements requiring additional appropriations as presented or, are requested under the collective bargaining warrant article for the annual town meeting. Our negotiations this cycle focused on the shared commitment of the town and the unions to employee retention, and discussions really centered on current economic factors affecting those working and living on Cape Cod, especially wages and paid leave. Uh, we looked at salary data from surrounding municipalities, and then the impact of hourly rate increases or adjustments for our forty-hour-a-week employees and for our thirty-five-hour-a-week employees. Many of the tentative agreements, I, as you all know, also reflect the employee feedback that's been gathered through the Town Manager's Food for Thought Program. And the following is summaries of the tentative agreements and the fiscal impacts. So for Chatham Municipal Employees Association, which is a bargaining unit comprised of about, uh, I'm sorry, not about, but comprised of seventy-three members, all forty-hour-per-week positions covered in the bargaining unit with an annual salary of less than sixty-five thousand dollars on July first, twenty twenty-five, shall receive a one-time additional step increase on July first. Also effective on July first, twenty twenty-five, all thirty-five-hour-per-week positions shall be increased to forty hours per week. An inclusion of a deadline for tuition reimbursement requests, which will be October fifteenth annually for consideration for the following fiscal year. Update to the current performance evaluation forms. On-call pay and formal administrative procedure language for the Facilities Division, effective July first, twenty twenty-five. A change to the compensation for transfer station employees that work holidays is defined by the collective bargaining agreement. This, they shall receive pay at a rate of time and one-half for their hourly rate for work performed on the holiday in addition to their holiday pay. One additional day of vacation leave per year for employees upon successful completion of one year of service until attaining five years of service, effective July first, twenty twenty-five. Up to one week or forty hours of vacation cash-out at the end of the fiscal year, available to employees who eligible to earn at least three weeks of vacation leave a year. And this provision's only available after carrying over eighty hours into the next fiscal year. An increase in the amount of boot allowance for eligible positions, which is forty positions, from a hundred and fifty dollars annually to two hundred and fifty dollars annually effective July first. A requirement for employees to utilize town vehicles when performing town business, unless a vehicle's not available or the business, uh, is not, does not support using a town vehicle, and then a department head would have to authorize the use of a personal vehicle. And a change to our health insurance cost structure that would revert all employees back to the seventy percent employee, employer responsibility, thirty percent employee responsibility for all unit members regardless of hire date. And this change would remove the two-tier model implemented for employees hired after twenty twelve who currently receive a cost-sharing structure of sixty-five percent employer responsibility and thirty-five percent employee responsibility. And then the final agreement is an amendment to the duration provision to allow for notification of intent to bargain a successor agreement to be sent between a hundred and fifty days and one hundred and eighty days, as the previous language did not provide a timeframe. The fiscal impact of the CMEA cost-associated tentative agreements for FY twenty-six is three hundred four thousand. The Chatham Managers Association, or CMA, is a bargaining unit comprised of seven covered positions. And the first tentative agreement is removal of reference to the agency service fee in accordance with the twenty eighteen Supreme Court Janus decision. An update to the grievance and arbitration process, uh, to amend the timeline as well as to change the steps to allow for the department head to be Step One instead of Human Resources, making Human Resources Step Two and the Town Manager Step Three, uh, with, with arbitration being Step Four. Previously, it started with Human Resources and did not go to the department head as a step. New parameters for professional growth recognition pay, which is an article in the collective bargaining agreement that grants a step increase to bargaining unit members who enhance their position by way of relevant degree or professional certification. And this new language will clarify that an employee is eligible no more than once in a five-year period, and that they're not eligible during their probationary period unless mutually agreed to upon hire. The same inclusion of a tuition reimbursement deadline is mentioned for CMEA. Update to the current performance evaluation article to remove a subsection which is dedicated to department head evaluations, as department heads are no longer part of this bargaining unit. Memorialization of Juneteenth as a paid holiday, and previous reference to Columbus Day, updated to Columbus Day, Indigenous Peoples' Day. A third vacation week available to bargaining unit members after three years of service instead of five years of service. Up to one week or forty hours of vacation carryover at the end of the fiscal year, available to employees with greater than five years of service. This carryover is in addition to the maximum of ten days of carryover, however, these days work differently. These additional five days have no monetary value, and they shall be forfeited if unused by September thirtieth. The same change to the health insurance cost-sharing structure that was mentioned previously. All employees will be at seventy percent employer responsibility, thirty percent employee responsibility. An amendment to the duration provision to allow for notification of intent to bargain a successor agreement to be sent no less than one hundred and eighty days. And then finally, a housekeeping item to remove references to the department heads as bargaining unit members. The fiscal impact of the CMA cost-associated tentative agreements for FY twenty-six is ten thousand five hundred. And I do just wanna take a moment to express our appreciation and our gratitude to both CMEA and CMA for working so collaboratively with us throughout this process.
Thank you. Questions? I think we're, I think we're good. You wanna make a motion? We, actually, we need four.
Well, it's, yeah. I moved to ratify and approve.
Oh, sorry.
I thought I pressed the button. I moved to ratify, approve the memorandum of agreement for successor collective bargaining agreement between the town and the Chatham Municipal Employees Association, effectively July first, twenty twenty-four through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-seven, contingent upon a funding appropriation at the twenty twenty-five annual town meeting.
Second. All those in favor, Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Shell says aye, Mr. Nacastro?
Aye.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I moved to ratify, approve the memorandum of agreement for successor collective bargaining agreement between the town and the Chatham Managers Association, effective July first, twenty twenty-four through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-seven, contingent upon a funding appropriation at the twenty twenty-five annual town meeting.
Second. All those in favor, Mr. Nacastro? Mr. Shell says aye, Ms. Davis?
Aye. Mr. Chair, I moved to place the collective bargaining, bargaining warrant article on the May tenth, twenty twenty-five annual town meeting warrant for funding of a, of cost items associated with the successor CBAs for three hundred and four thousand and ten thousand five hundred for a total of, of thirteen, um, three hundred fourteen thousand five hundred, um, dollars.
Second. All those in favor, Mr. Nacastro?
Aye.
Mr. Shell says aye, Ms. Davis?
Aye. Mr. Chair, I, I vote to favorably recommend the collective bargaining warrant article on the May tenth, twenty twenty-five annual town meeting warrant.
Second. All those in favor, Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Shell says aye, and Mr. Nacastro?
Aye.
We're good.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have some budget adjustment transfers. Is that, ah, welcome, Ms. Mazerol.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Carrie Mazerol, Finance Director. I have a few items to go over. The first one is year-end budget adjustment transfers for the FY 2025 budget. So as we near the end of the fiscal year, it's important to kind of go through the budget to see where we have, where we need supplementals and where we need maybe some coverage for any deficits and any other funds. So this would be an article for a transfer of $60,000 from the fire capital line to the general liability insurance to cover unanticipated increases in the insurance costs that were not accounted for during the FY 2025 budget process. There is also a transfer of $2,000 from the Receipts Reserve for Appropriation Fund for the railroad. They had requested $5,000 for their FY 2025 budget and we only appropriated $3,000 for their budget. And then there is a transfer of $316,200 from free cash to the Affordable Housing Trust to account for back interest from 2009 to 2024, which was credited to the general fund instead of going to the Affordable Housing Trust during this time period. I can, I just want to clarify on the, the free cash going to the Affordable Housing Trust. So it is my understanding that there was an Affordable Housing Trust account created, but it wasn't created for, in a bank account where it earns interest. It was just in a fund on our ledger. So the money that was actually being earned as interest was just going to the general fund instead of going to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. And this was brought to my attention back in September, I want to say. And since then, we have created a bank account for the Affordable Housing Trust and it is now earning interest. And this is the interest that they would have earned based on the market interest rates that we've received from Bartholomew and Cape Cod Five.
Okay. Just to clarify that, you're really just transferring interest that was earned on general fund.
That closed to free cash, yep.
Which is in free cash and now it's being moved over to the Affordable Housing Trust.
Yes, that is correct.
And the only other question I have is we have, I'm a little confused as to, we've got two warrant, I think we have two warrant articles.
Oh, yeah, because that was an error. When I was working through the budget, I was going to put something on there, but I found other funding, so we don't need to actually do that transfer, so.
So the.
It's just those three items.
Just the three?
Mm-hmm.
And so it's what's now called Article Three.
Yep.
With those three items on it.
That is correct, without that other one on there. Sorry, I apologize.
Yeah, no, no apology necessary. Any comments or questions here?
No, Mr. Chairman. I do note in the motion, there's something missing in the first line at the end. You might want to, when you, when you prepare this for the warrant. I move that the town vote to transfer 384, after the word four. And the only other comment is, I know, I want to thank Carolyn, Carolyn for initiating the inquiry into the old interest. I know Carrie worked with, with her on that, so.
I'm sorry, into?
And the, the interest that wasn't.
Oh, okay.
Applied back then, to get that straightened out. Carolyn had identified that as an issue that we should look into, and we did.
Okay.
I think it's a good solution. So I would, I guess we're looking for a vote, a motion here?
Yes, please.
I move to.
Place.
Place the, this article on the, for the current fiscal year FY 2025 budget adjustment, budget adjustment on the warrant.
Second.
All those in favor, Mr. Nacastro.
Aye.
Mr. Shell says aye. Ms. Davis.
Aye.
And I move to recommend.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor, Mr. Nacastro.
Aye.
Mr. Shell says aye. Ms. Davis.
Aye.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, go ahead.
So the next item is, a couple of items that you've seen before. They're annual town meeting articles. The first one is fix salaries for the elected officials. This is, to fix the salaries, we, it's not to appropriate them because we've already put them into the budget. It's just every town meeting, it requires, Mass. General Law requires a town meeting, fix the salaries of elected officials annually, which is for the moderator and the select board. The other item on the list is also another annual town meeting article and it's to, for the enterprise fund. And that is also an annual item that we have to adopt every town meeting and it is to be funded with $25,000. The other item is one that you probably haven't seen much in the past, but it is a peg access funds. And this article is for $78,600. Peg access funds are collected by the cable operator in support of public education and general government program and are paid to the town on a quarterly basis. The funds are currently held in the Receipts Reserve for Appropriation, which requires a majority vote at town meeting. The town currently receives 5% each quarter from Comcast for public education and government. And each of these are held in a separate account, public funds, education funds, and government funds. We use the education funds for the school. We use the government funds for Chatham TV. And the public funds are to be spent on a public access such as Cape Media or Lower Cape Media. And right now, we're working on a contract to, with Cape, Lower, Cape Media, not Lower Cape, Cape Media. And they currently, they provide public access to the public or, you know, businesses, local businesses, and they also provide public access on TV. And it's our duty to be paying them this, these funds because otherwise they're just going to sit on the ledger, so. So for FY 2024, we collected $78,600 and this will need to be appropriated at town meeting.
With respect to the, where, I'm, I'm a little, it says to transfer a sum of money from the Receipts Reserve Cable Television Peg Access Special Revenue Fund to where?
It's going to go, it's a little confusing. So we can't pay directly from our Receipts Reserve for appropriation, expend directly from there, so we have to appropriate at town meeting. And then it will go into a general fund capital line and then from there, I can spend it and send it over to Cape Media.
Do we need to say where it's going and?
No.
We don't?
No, no.
Okay.
It's just an accounting mechanism that I, I'll do.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, go ahead, Dean.
You're going to take these one by one?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Well, I think on the first one, don't we have to do the?
Yeah, that's what I was going to say.
Yes, thank you.
On the fixing of the salaries, the three of us, all five board members have a conflict and so we have to invoke the rule of necessity as advised by the State Ethics Commission by each to clear a conflict. So we each receive a stipend and I'm one of the members that receives a stipend and I'll leave the others to say it for themselves if you want.
I, I, what he said.
Okay.
Same.
With that, and I think, do we have to vote on that?
You do.
So.
Yes, we do.
I move that we invoke the rule of necessity.
Second. All those in favor, Mr. Nacastro.
Aye.
Mr. Shell says aye. Ms. Davis.
Aye.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve, that we vote to place all three of these articles on the warrant. Or do you want to take?
Well, it's a single, I think it's a single, isn't it a single article fixing the?
They're each singles, yeah.
Yeah, it's a single article fixing the salaries of the elected officials.
Okay, you want to take them separately?
Yeah.
Okay. I move that we place that on the warrant.
Second.
All those in favor, Mr. Nacastro.
Aye.
Mr. Shell says aye. Ms. Davis.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we recommend that article.
Second.
All those in favor, Mr. Nacastro.
Aye.
Mr. Shell says aye. Ms. Davis.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we place the article on Wood Waste Reclamation Facility Enterprise Fund on the warrant.
Second.
All those in favor, Mr. Nacastro.
Aye.
Mr. Shell says aye. Ms. Davis.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we recommend that article.
Second.
All those in favor, Ms. Davis.
Aye.
Mr. Shell says aye. Mr. Nacastro.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we place the Public Cable Access and Technology article on the warrant.
Second.
All those in favor, Mr. Nacastro.
Aye.
Mr. Shell says aye. Ms. Davis.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we recommend that article.
Second.
All those in favor, Ms. Davis.
Aye.
Mr. Shell says aye. Mr. Nacastro.
Aye.
Okay, done.
Thank you.
Next case.
Next one. Okay, this is another annual article and it's for the revolving fund articles for FY 2026 each year. Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53 and a half, requires annual approval of town meeting to authorize the continuation and spending ceiling for revolving funds. These are funds, revolving funds that were, that are in consideration, sorry. The Airport Revolving Fund for $150,000 spending limit. Basset House Revolving Fund for an $8,000 spending limit. Inspection Services Revolving Fund for $150,000 spending limit. Recycling Revolving Fund for a $5,000 spending limit. Marconi Station Revolving Fund for a $10,000 spending limit. And Waterway User Fee Revolving Fund for a $1 million spending limit. And these are the same amounts, proposed limits that we had for FY 2025. Nothing has changed for those.
Okay. If there are no questions, do we have a motion? I, I want, you have my title, you carried that over from last year, in the, in the airport revolving fund.
I'm sorry.
It's the speaker title, so we'll update those.
Oh, yeah, we can update that, that's fine. Sorry. Yep.
It's all right, no problem. So this is a single?
So the Airport Revolving Fund is a single one and the other ones are under the consolidated.
Okay.
So you have to vote for the airport and then?
Two, two separate ones?
Yeah.
Okay. I'll take a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move, let me just ask either Carrie or Jill, do we have to take a separate vote on endorsing the amounts that are included? That's what the recommendation of staff implies. Or do we just take the usual two votes, place the article and?
I think you can do the usual two votes, yeah.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we place the article on the Airport Revolving Fund Authorization on the warrant.
Second.
All those in favor, Mr. Nacastro.
Aye.
Mr. Shell says aye. Ms. Davis.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we recommend this article.
Second.
All those in favor, Mr. Shell says aye. Mr. Nacastro.
Aye.
Ms. Davis.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we place the article on Consolidated Revolving Funds on the warrant.
Second.
All those in favor, Ms. Davis.
Aye.
Mr. Shell says aye. Mr. Nacastro.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we recommend this article.
Second.
All those in favor, Mr. Nacastro.
Aye.
Mr. Shell says aye. Ms. Davis.
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, the last one is the Cape Cod Regional Technical High School operating budget for FY 2026. On February 27th, it was the Cape Cod Technical Regional High School, School Committee had voted on their budget. And what was presented to you on, in February, was that their assessment was 424,702 and an additional debt service of 163,247,000, bringing the total to 587,949 for an overall increase to Chatham at 2.17%. And again, the number of Chatham students still remains steady at 20. Nothing else has changed since I came to you guys a couple of weeks ago and went over the budget.
Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I vote to place the article as presented on the 2025 annual town meeting budget.
Second. All those in favor, Ms. Davis.
Aye.
Mr. Shell says aye. Mr. Nacastro.
Aye.
Mr. Chair, I vote, I move to recommend the article to the 2025 annual town meeting.
Second. All those in favor, Ms. Davis.
Aye.
Mr. Shell says aye. Mr. Nacastro.
Aye.
Okay.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Okay. Next item is the electronic visual speed display signs. I think this is you, Dean, if I could. We don't have anything tonight on the, on the, on the reduction of the speed and I just want to be clear for myself as well as for the public whether this is an alternative or we're going to offer town meeting alternatives or they can do both.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. I think the answer is the la, the last of the, of the options you suggested. I, I mean, I, I present this as an alternative to the original idea, the original idea of adopting the state law, accepting the state law that allows us to reduce the speed limit. But it could be an alternative that is implemented intermittently to give the town a chance to see if this would work and we could defer that, the other idea going forward. Or we could, we could send both items to town meeting, assuming the board wants to do that. I certainly would be open to sending the original idea to town meeting, let town meeting vote it up or down. I probably would not recommend it myself, but, because I think what I'm proposing tonight is probably a more workable solution, at least in the, in the short term. But I'm, I recognize that there are folks that want some, have wanted something on the warrant. I haven't heard too much about it since we took this up, so I'm open to pretty much anything, but I.
Okay, well, I kind of jumped the gun here. Do you want to present what the idea is?
Sure.
I think the last time you mentioned it, but.
Sure, and I thank you.
Before us officially.
Sure.
Before this evening, so go ahead.
And I thank you and the town manager for putting this on the warrant. So following the public forum that was held on, on the 25 mile-per-hour speed limit, I spoke with the police chief about possible options for dealing with calming traffic on various streets in town. And the subject of the electronic display signs, one of which I mentioned, others mentioned it on Old Commeres Road, came up. And I became convinced, and I think the chief who's here is of the view that that, those types of, that type of sign does serve a calming effect. It's a dynamic sign. It tells you what your speed is. The one on Old Commeres Road has, has two colors. It's green if you're within the limit, it's red if you're over. So I got some information from the chief and from the Public Works Director on the cost of these signs. The stationary signs like that one on Old Commeres Road is about $3,500 installed. We own it. There are also portable signs that can be moved from street to street and that, that provides some flexibilities, particularly in the, in the high season. Those cost $4,500. And with those, you have to purchase a service contract, I guess, for $1,500 a year. So I took a look at, you know, what streets we might want to put them on. Streets like Stage Harbor Road, for which we have received a petition. Mr. Fugelstadt has put that forward. We've heard a lot of talk about Old Queen Anne Road, Forest Beach Road, other roads in South Chatham. I think I've mentioned Cross Street myself. I don't know how many of which type of signs we should buy. I would leave that up to the discretion of the police chief and the Public Works Director under the oversight of the town manager. But I think if we could make it possible to purchase some of these signs and install them, in, in the short term, we would have a better idea of what steps are important and could be taken to calm traffic. So I came up with the idea of about $60,000 as an appropriation because that's not too much money, it's a half a penny on the tax rate. And so I've, with, with the consultation of both the chief and Mr. Failey, and under the direction of the town manager, we came up with an article. And really what it does is it authorizes and appropriates $60,000 for the purpose of the purchase, placement, and operation of both stationary and portable electronic signs, visual speed display signs for motorists on various public ways. And there's an explanation in the warrant that kind of talked. And there's an explanation in the warrant that kind of talk, goes into of the various considerations and concerns that we've talked about. So I wanted to just put that forward and I'm happy to offer a motion to place this on the warrant and recommend it if, if there's support for it among the board. Hope that's helpful. Help any answer questions.
Thanks.
The chief is here, too.
Thanks, Dean. I appreciate this as an alternative to the other plan. Though I do appreciate the idea of public process and what we've gone through with the, with the citizens of Chatham. I'm, I move to, to support this as an alternative at town meeting, so I'm in favor of getting it on the warrant. I will second your motion if you've made it.
Yeah, I, I, I have a couple of comments here. First of all, the, I mean, I presume next week we'll have in front of us the, the 25 mile an hour speed limit. I don't remember whether that, I, I know I went to the public session and the estimate was that it's something like $80,000 to place the new signs. Is that part of, is that anticipated to be part of the, 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 the speed reduction proposal?
My understanding was that it was going to be just the adoption of Mass General Law, Chapter 90, because the discussion of the board was then whether it would be townwide or certain roads would be identified to have that applied to it.
Right.
So the warrant article as currently drafted, which will be before the board next week, is simply the adoption of Mass General Law, Chapter 90, whatever the section, which I'm not remembering right now.
If that were to pass, how do we pay for the, and, and assuming the select board comes back and recommends as recommended, that we do all this, that we, we do everywhere where the cost is estimated to be $80,000, how do we pay for that before Town Meeting 26?
Yeah, I, I think after further consideration, I would put a funding amount in, in the article itself. So one is to adopt or the local option for the speed limits and then to, to appropriate 83,000, I think it was, in order to place the sign replacements. So I just, we just have to think a little further about how to draft the article.
And, and, and that's fine. I don't bring that, I'm not, I, I, I have to admit, I'm not sure what I think here. I, I, I do think that we probably don't want to spend $80,000, $85,000, 83,000 for that and 60 for this. At least that would be my initial inclination, since we're really kind of swatting the same flies with, with both of them. Given that we got two of our colleagues not here tonight, I, I guess my initial reaction would be, let's take this up, take them up in tandem and decide one or the other. I'll be honest with you. I, I, you know, I like your idea because I think it does moderate speed. You know, just doing very fundamental arithmetic and saying, okay, it's roughly four grand a copy. 60, that gets us 15 of these, you know, things. Is that enough to really address the problem? Because I, I personally think, you know, if it's fixed, then we got to pick 15 places and leave them there. If it's movable, you know, it's there for a while. People kind of get used to behaving and then it goes away and they either forget or it's new people or whatever. I, I, you know, I, I'd rather spend a few more bucks and have these things be in place where we think there's a problem and where we're getting input from the community that there's a prob, or the police department, or both.
Go ahead, please. I'm totally in sympathy with deferring a decision on this till next week when we have the other two board members here. I guess the idea of the 60,000, I didn't want to put a huge amount on the warrant. We've got, we're spending a lot of money already this year. And I would leave it to the discretion of the department, the chief especially, to determine, you know, which streets do you want to put a stationary sign on? And do you want to have some mobile signs? And just an informal conversation with the chief and maybe he can speak next week or if he wanted, he can speak tonight. He talked about using the mobile signs during the summertime on various streets where there is a problem. I will just say that, you know, my sense is just as a driver, we have these fixed signs that say, you know, 30 mile an hour speed limit or there's no sign and you have to assume that every street in Massachusetts is 30 miles an hour. And I, I think it, it's like all the, it's like background noise. You don't really, a lot of drivers don't pay any attention to that. I know that I pay attention when I see a sign that says, you're going over the speed limit. And I always think there's a cruiser behind that. And we, we, we know that, we know that, because the chief has said, we don't have, you can put up, post all the speed limit signs you want. But if we don't have cruisers patrolling these streets all the time, and we don't, and we can't, we can't afford that, then you've got a problem. So that's why I lean toward the electronic signs. I think they're almost like having a speed bump. But anyway, those are my, my thoughts and I'm happy to talk about it next week and we can see if there's still sufficient interest on the other article.
Well, and, and I, my only other comment is if we're willing to spend $83,000 on, you know, putting signs everywhere, aside from how effective you think that is, maybe we ought to be willing to, and this is the alternative, we ought to be willing to spend at least that amount of money for this. So I, you know.
That's right.
But, and I, I, I don't, you want to comment now? Okay. I, I didn't want to put you on the spot, but I'd kind of like to hear what you have to say.
I just, before I lose my train of thought, I just, what I think Dean is trying to say is, in the past presentations that we've forwarded, we have four or five streets that are, are daily offenders where the speeders are. They're the, the meeting houses, the, 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 the Stage Hoppers, the, and those would be the spots where I would agree would be fixed. Because those are the busiest streets that probably attract the most outsiders from town. So the locals, they'll, they'll know and, and they'll, they'll get used to it and they'll probably ignore it. But the locals won't, the deliveries won't. But what I think, what Dean is trying to say is, the portable devices, we can move those to the seasonal hotspots. Or in the off-season, move them to the locations where the permanent ones are not, just to either re-identify if there are speeding problems or not. And those, the, the, the portable ones usually cost a little bit more is because they have a battery, not, they're not solar. And they're the ones that has the, the software that you can download and analyze to come with the SLIC report. So I think that's what, what you're trying to say.
Thank you.
Okay, now, now it's clear, Dean.
No, seriously.
He'll take another.
He'll take another 23,000, I think.
Well, no, I, I, again, I, I, I guess I would like next week to have some sense of what, you know, what number of A and B would, would, would be a good start. We don't have to solve the whole problem maybe this year, but what's a good start in terms of coming up with a, an alternative to the whole 25 mile an hour, you know, cross-the-board reduction, which has considerable support here.
Oh, yeah.
So I, you know.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Anything else? Okay. We have a, we have a grant of an easement for utility service at 114 Training Field Road. I don't know who's, is that, is that you, Jill? Is that Rob?
There's three of us that have been working on it. So we, so this is an easement to the town's water treatment plant on Training Field Road. The request that we had was for an easement. And typically, those easements go to the town meeting. And, and before that, we issue a license to allow that connection to take place. So we had received the draft license from NSTAR and had presented it to town council to review. And then there was just comments going back and forth. So I, I don't have final comments yet from Eversource or through Nash, I'm sorry, NSTAR. Marissa, I think Marissa, Marissa Eversource from Marissa. So what we wanted the board to do is review the license and we're waiting to hear back from Marissa from Eversource to make sure that they accept the changes to the license. And, and I think we've discussed it before about the license being revocable. It's not an easement until town meeting actually approves the easement and it's a two-thirds vote at town meeting.
So we would be asking town meeting, however, to approve the easement?
Yes.
And, and so the, I mean, the, the thing that was a little bit up in the air for me was the, whether the license really was of any use because, would, would they be willing to do what they have to do in terms of installing equipment and, and effectively committing things that couldn't be recalled with a revocable license as opposed to an easement? But at the moment, we're kind of, I mean, and, and the comments from Jay on the, on the license don't seem all that troublesome either. So I, I, I would think that, you know, between being close on the easement, on, on the, on the license and having the easement presumably be approved in May, this is a pretty straightforward thing. I, I don't, maybe I'm missing something.
I don't think it's any...
Yeah, and the, we received the initial request in August 26, 2024 and since then, there's been some back and forth. And so that's why the gap is smaller between the license and the easement. So...
Yeah, and I, I think it's, that's fine. I, I do only have one comment. I, you know, I'm, I'm reading these carefully. I, I hope they can spell my name right.
Yes.
Yeah, we saw that.
Other than that, I'm, I'm actually now kind of stalling here until Dean gets back. Because I don't think we, I'm, I'm, I'm not sure whether we can count his presence as a quorum if he's out of the room for a couple of minutes. So...
We need to wait for him.
Yeah. And I would move on to the next one, except that's his agenda item as well, so... Well, I, one question I have, Rob, is, is most of the, the equipment that we're talking about here at Training Field Road, most of that's, it's got to be at least partially installed already, no?
It's not yet, no.
Oh, it's not, okay.
No.
But they're not waiting for this, are they?
Well, typically Eversource will, you know, take action on a license. You know, we're, we're in agreement. We have got the same common goals. We just need power to get to the, to the well's location, so...
Right, right. Okay, well, Dean, in your absence, we, if you didn't, we, we, Shereen and I concluded this is pretty straightforward and we don't have any problem with it, so...
The, the license, you mean?
Yeah, a, as well as the proposed easement for town meeting.
I had one question on the easement itself. There was just one sentence. Let me see if I can find it. Yes, on, it's on actually the first page of the document that is supposed to be, I guess, recorded. Begins, "Know all men by these presents." It's the second to last paragraph where it says that, "Any equipment installed by the grantor," that's us, "shall be maintained by the grantor. And if the grantor fails to repair or maintain such equipment, the grantee, Eversource, reserves the right to do so at the grantor's sole cost and expense." Do we have any concern about that? That they can go in and if we, if we somehow are deficient, they can go in and correct the problem and bill us?
I believe this is, even though Eversource would be installing the equipment, we're, we're paying for them to install it, so it would be owned.
Okay.
My understanding, it'd be owned by the town, but it gives them the right to repair it if, I guess, if we were neglectful on that.
Okay, all right, thank you. That was my, my only question. So, do you want a motion to...
Yes, please.
Well, first, I guess we have to, I move to authorize the town manager to execute the license to enter and use real town property at 114 Training Field Road as presented by Eversource, pending acceptance of town council's proposed amendments.
Second.
All those in favor, Mr. Nacastro.
Aye.
Mr. Shell says aye. Ms. Davis?
Aye.
And then, is there a separate article?
Yeah, at the top of, here.
Okay, all right. I missed it here. I move to place an article on the 2025 Annual Town Meeting Warrant to Grant an Easement to Eversource as presented.
Second.
All those in favor, Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Shell says aye. Mr. Nacastro?
Aye, and I move to recommend the article.
Second.
All those in favor, Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Shell says aye and Mr. Nacastro?
Aye.
Great, thank you.
Okay. So we have, I guess it's for home rule petitions to, that are proposed to be refiled. Dean, with your permission, I'd like to get the ones that are no discussion out of the way. And Jill, do you want to just give us the highlights of the top, of, of, beginning with the real property transfer fee?
Yes, so this was originally presented at town meeting in 2021. And as you know, for each two-year legislative session, if the town's request for special legislation isn't approved, we have to refile it. So this will eventually be the, the third refiling, I believe, of it. So do you want me to go through the...
I, I would just get the, the, the three that are, that are not the, the Housing Trust issue on the table and then we can vote to refile, to, to approve, refiling them, a, a vote to put the article on, to, to place the article and recommend it, or recommend them as a group.
Okay, and so this is a potential funding source for both affordable and attainable housing through a transfer fee for homes valued over $2 million and over.
Right.
The next item is use of the Community Preservation Act funds for affordable and attainable housing up to 20%, I'm sorry, 200% of the area mean, mean income. It's limited under the CPA Act within 100 AMI. So this will provide, provide an opportunity for how, what we deem workforce or attainable housing. And then the last one is a prevailing wage exemption. This is probably the, the oldest article that we had filed. We had success back in the early 2000s with getting an exemption for the Marconi project where the museum is in the hotel. And what we had requested is the exemption from using prevailing wage, but providing an opportunity for local contractors or small shop local contractors to work on town projects valued at $50,000 or below. So this isn't, it isn't giving and busting by any means. It's an opportunity for local contractors. This one also hasn't had much traction at all, but I would recommend that we file it again.
Okay. So, yeah, go ahead, please.
Jill, with respect to the, the transfer fee, when that was first presented in 2021, I voted against it.
Yes.
I had some concerns. I did help Jeff, who, he was the sponsor of this, clean up some of the items in it, but I voted against it on policy grounds. But we have refiled this, did we, have we not gone back to town meeting since 2021 to, to get authorization to refile? Because I think I voted yes to refile it.
You did.
Because town meeting had endorsed it.
Yeah, so it was 2023, so it's a two-year cycle. That's why we're bringing it back in 25.
All right. I mean, I will vote the same tonight to, to, to endorse it and, and place and endorse it. I just wanted to point out one thing that I think is a frailty in the, in the, in it. And I raised this in 2021 and no one agreed with me. This has to, obviously, this is, this has to do with the $2 million threshold. And I said at the time, we really should have an escalator there. Because the value of property keeps rising in this town. And I checked with the assessor's office yesterday. And according to the DOR information, in 2021, the, the average single-family home value in the town of Chatham was approximately $1 million. In 2025, it's $1,675,000. So it's gone up dramatically. I know the, the rise, the rate of rise is, is diminishing. I know the, the rise, the rate of rise is, is diminishing, but at some point, if this $2,000 threshold stays without an escalator, we're going to be affecting a lot of people, including people who, who really are, are cash poor, as it were, but property rich. So, it, it's something I think we should, you know, keep in mind. I, I, I do think it's, you know, I wish that had, had been, had been changed, but it's not going to be changed tonight, so I just really wanted to make that point.
It'd be changed at town meeting. I mean.
Could be, yeah.
Who wants to offer a motion to change that?
Yeah.
To an escalator?
Otherwise, I'm okay with the rest of them, and.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I, I mean, I think we've made the sale here, and I, I should probably just leave it at that, but I, I, I'm going to say that, that I, I, I'm in favor of it, I was in favor of it back then, and I appreciate your support. I, I think the significance of this is much more in terms of telling the general court that Chatham needs to find sources of funding for housing. This is more of a, a, a flag-waving affair, because what's going to happen? There, there was a, a transfer fee in the Affordable Homes Act that was taken out, that will be probably reconsidered in this session, and all we're doing really here is saying we'd, we'd like you to, to, to give us authorization, either as a town or as a state for this. And you perhaps know that the, what's in the, what was in the Affordable Homes Act is much more flexible, both in terms of threshold and in terms of amounts. So, with that, I'll, just to simplify, I'll make the motion to place the three articles as described by Jill, and as set forth in the staff memorandum.
Second.
All those in favor, Mr. Nacastro?
Aye.
Mr. Shell says aye, Ms. Davis?
Aye.
And I will move to recommend those three articles.
Second.
All those, all those in favor, Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Shell says aye.
Aye.
I'm sorry, Mr. Nacastro?
Aye.
Aye, okay, you're on.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. This has to do with the, the refile of the petition to create a, a new housing trust, and for the benefit of the public, the housing trust would replace the existing housing trust, which is an affordable housing trust, and will have just a housing trust which will administer two funds, the house, the Affordable Housing Trust Fund and, and an attainable housing trust fund. I supported this back then, I, I am in favor of the, of establishing a new housing trust. What concerns me about this, and I didn't think about it at the time, is that the, the home rule petition specifies in detail who is on the housing trust board. And if this is enacted with that in place, the only way the town of Chatham, the voters of Chatham could change that, if they wanted to make a change in the composition of the housing trust board, would be to go back to the legislature. It would be codified in state law, you'd need another home rule petition to do that. I am proposing an amendment to that in order to preserve for the voters of Chatham the same measure of local control over the composition of the proposed housing trust that we currently have over the existing Affordable Housing Trust Board of Trustees. And also, it's the same measure of local control which the legislature, under current law, Mass. General Law's Chapter 44, Section 55(c), offers to every other one of the 351 cities and towns of Massachusetts who might want to create an affordable housing trust. Right now, with respect to our Affordable Housing Trust, the voters can make changes by bylaw, and we, we did that in, in a couple of years ago, I think, at your initiative, when we, we changed from five select board members and, and two public members to effectively the reverse. I'm not proposing any bylaw changes. I have no intention to do that currently, or at this coming town meeting. I know we have a petition article with which I'm sympathetic, but we'll discuss that next week, but that's not my initiative. I just want to preserve local control over the trust board. So, in drafting this, and I had an initial form, formulation which I had submitted to the town manager and, and to you, Mr. Chairman, for your information, but I have since revised that in consultation with the town manager and the town council. And basically, the language would say that the trust board of this new trust will be as currently set forth in the bylaws of the town of Chatham. That would, that means whenever this act is enacted by the legislature, whatever formulation of the, of the Chatham Trust, section, in, in Chapter 10, Section 10.5 for the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, that's the trust that we have. And the language continues, "Or shall otherwise from time to time be set forth in the bylaws of the town of Chatham." That allows the town to make changes from time to time if they want to. With one proviso, the bylaws shall provide that the select board shall designate a minimum of one of its own members to serve on the Board of Trustees. That's the language that is currently in the state law. Though the enabling statute for affordable housing trusts does not specify who's on the board, other than you have to have at least one select board member. So, that's, that's the sum and substance of what I'm doing. I'm prepared to offer an amendment, but you probably want to discuss this first, but really, this is a home rule petition, and I want to strengthen the local control that we have in the town of Chatham. Thank you.
Okay, so, I'm going to support your amendment. I, I, I think it's, it's fine. I, I, I have a couple of thoughts that I want to share, which come under the heading of, you know, sort of additions, additional thinking. Over the time from 2021, when we first submitted the application for a new trust, there has been universal, in fact, unanimous support for that. The town, the select board, the Finance Committee have supported the, the, the governance provision, which was two select board members and five outside members, one of whom is a member of the Community Housing Partnership. The first two times, it was a, declared by the moderator a substantial majority, supported it. The last time, there was, there was actually a vote, when we voted to amend the bylaws and change the board of the, the Affordable Housing Trust, and that was 85% to 15%. So, and, and by the way, at, at, at the two meetings where the new trust was discussed, the reservation from the, from the floor of the town meeting basically was, they didn't like the idea of the board being, the select board being in the minority. You may recall that. I'm trying to, well, there were a couple of comments made that were very, very tough, that, you know, we, we want a majority of the board to be the select board. I, your, your, your suggestion, I think, is fine. I, I certainly agree with, once we get what we would like in the way of a trust, we would like to be able to control locally the, the makeup of the, of the, of the board of that, of that trust. I'll say two other things, and so, it's fine. The, the two things I do want to say that I think need to be, people need to understand here are, number one, the, the legislature, the, the general court is, I think, done with these kinds of trusts. There is a trust, there's a housing trust now in the Affordable Homes Act. It will get sort of its rules and regulations out of this committee that is deciding all the key issues, that's implementing the Affordable Homes Act. And when they get done with that, we will have in front of us the trust that we, as a seasonal community, if we approve the designation as a, a seasonal community, that'll be the trust we have to work with. We'll have to figure out, and it will not be easy, but we'll have to figure out how to integrate that with the current Affordable Housing Trust, and we should do that when that happens, including if people want the, the governance. But having said all of that, which is irrelevant to your proposal, I support your amendment, and I will vote in favor of it.
Thanks, Mike. I'm in favor of it, too, to put it on the board, and I think the local control option is key to the, to the whole, the whole, the whole idea. We, we really just need to move forward with, with housing initiatives and figure out the best way we can do this. And the Affordable Homes Act is, is there waiting for us, I mean, the Seasonal Communities Act is waiting for our town's approval, so that, that might tell a different story at the end of the day, but, yeah. So, if you want, we can make a, you want to?
I, I, I think if you want to just put the two together, I mean, we don't have anything on the table here, so just to, to move to refile it with that amendment.
Okay, I'm, Mr. Chairman, I move that the select board place an article on the warrant for the annual town meeting to refile the home rule petition to establish a new housing trust, which includes the amendment that I have set before the board tonight, which has very, I won't read it all, it's in the packet. There are various lines that are stricken, and there's language that is added.
I'll second that. All those in favor, Mr. Nacastro?
Aye.
Mr. Shell says aye, Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Move to recommend?
Second.
All those in favor, Mr. Nacastro?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
And Mr. Shell says aye.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Okay, next, where are we here? Oh, this is the home rule petition for special designation for commercial fishermen within Section 32 of the Seasonal Communities, section of the Affordable Homes Act. I, I, I'm sorry, oh, Carolyn, are you the presenter?
I am.
You're, you're.
I guess I'll have Gloria next.
You're nominated.
Gloria is also online.
Oh, Gloria, all right, Gloria, yeah. Gloria?
Oh, sorry, sorry about that. Oh my goodness, the technology. Okay, so, we're on the citizens' petition requesting the fishermen.
Home, yeah, home rule petition to add the, the fishermen to Section 32.
Okay, so, this was, I think, briefly discussed by Carolyn at a prior select board meeting. The goal of this is to kind of extend the, the kind of privileges and preferences given to certain vocations that are specifically mentioned within the Seasonal Communities section of the Affordable Homes Act. For example, the town, if it should adopt seasonal communities, would be able to create housing for municipal employees, and some of the vocations that are mentioned are teachers, first responders, firefighters, DPW workers. There's also a section in Seasonal Communities which allows housing to be targeted to artists, writers, and other creatives. I'm assuming that's because so much of the heritage of the Cape includes artists and writers. And the Community Housing Partnership, along with the Shellfish Advisory Committee and the Shellfish Constable, have all supported the idea of adding commercial fishermen to that group of vocations that specifically mentioned, that can be given a preference for housing within, within the town of Chatham.
Okay, Shereen?
I'm supportive of this article, and I did mention this last week, but I do want to just, what, what stands out for Chatham maybe more than other communities is our, we have a residency requirement for Chatham shellfishing, commercial shellfishing activity, and it, it's, it, you know, people might ask, well, why isn't, why can't we just open up our shellfishing to, you know, be regional? I mean, we have an obligation to our townspeople that we have a wonderful wild access resource here, and, you know, this is, this is about food production, food security, and it's also about the, what we've already invested into the seafood industry in Chatham. We are, we are an important port for Massachusetts as far as landings are concerned. I would think it would be best, in our best interest, to have those people who utilize our infrastructure to be residents here, and I think it would be nothing better than to be able to provide housing for a group of folks at a failing disenfranchised by the cost of living, which is something that's happened all over the coast, from what I understand, with, with many of the communities up and down the coast, including Gloucester, Rockport area. We have, you know, we have, you know, we have two different, you know, looks at, at, at our community. There's people that, you know, resource from the coastline for, for, you know, for seafood production, but then we have people that come here and they love the, the water, and so that rising cost of housing for Chatham has been, is not unusual for the rest of the communities around the state, but I think that we could be leaders in, in supporting our local food producers.
Yeah, I'm just going to say, I, I support it in principle. I think that, for all the reasons that, that Shereen has just articulated, we need to keep this group in mind as we focus on who are the, the, the likeliest continuing supporters, subsidizers, and contributors to our economy. I'll take a motion.
I move to place and recommend the home rule petition warrant article. That would include commercial fishermen as a designated vocation for affordable and attainable housing preference on the 2025 Annual Town Meeting Warrant.
Second.
All those in favor, Mr. Shell says aye, Mr. Nacastro?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Recommend?
I'll vote to, move to recommend, thank you.
Second.
All those in favor, Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Shell says aye, and Mr. Nacastro?
Aye.
Okay, item, the last item on the list here is a citizens' petition, a general bylaw change restricting land use at Chatham's Airport to FAA Airplane Design Group One Aircraft, Mr. Stahl. Welcome.
Thank you. Jerry Stahl, West Chatham. Let me start by first defining for the public who may not have studied the proposed wording, there's a distinction that the FAA makes about different kinds of planes that use the airport. They call them airplane design groups. There's Group One, which is the planes that have always used the Chatham Airport, they're propeller planes, small, they hold one or two passengers. Then there's Design Group Two, which is distinguished by being larger, namely, having a wingspan of at least 49 feet. These are typically turboprops or jets, such as the Pilatus, which is well-known to residents. So, we have here a citizen proposal that was signed by about close to 100 Chatham voters, and we could easily have gotten a lot more. This has a lot of public support. Voters are tired of the airport increasingly impacting the surrounding community without showing concern for the safety and well-being of the residents, despite all their talk about safety. In the Chatham Municipal Airport Master Plan Update for 2018, which is the current plan for the airport, it claimed it would, quote, "Maintain the character of Chatham as a small airport that primarily serves recreational pilots while improving safety and security for residents and aviators alike." That sounded good, but we haven't seen it carried through. The AMPU plan actually encourages, as we found out as it unfolds, it encourages- it encourages airport use by charter flights, the larger planes, without respecting community concerns about them. The master plan continues to define what the FAA calls the critical aircraft, which determines the safety requirements of the airport, as a small Beech Baron B-58 propeller aircraft, which used to be popular at the airport. However, in subsequent years, the number of charter flights by larger planes has continually increased. Last year, for instance, there were more than six times as many operations by Pilatus PC-12s, turboprops, as there were by the Beech Barons. The legal problem with this is that the Chatham Municipal Airport is not designed for these aircraft, the bigger ones, and this is a serious safety issue. The FAA design standards are very different for the big planes than for the traditional smaller ones. And Chatham Airport is designed for the safety issues of the smaller airplanes and has been doing a good job of that, but it's not designed for these larger aircraft. And the FAA therefore has put a limit to how many flights there can be by airplanes that are not in the design category that the airport is equipped for, the so-called critical aircraft. The so-called critical aircraft is defined by the FAA as the most demanding aircraft type which makes regular use of the airport. And by regular use, they mean equal to or greater than 500 operations a year. So the FAA has defined, it shouldn't go over more than 500 operations a year. An operation is a plane landing or taking off, by planes that are not in the category that the airport is equipped for, designed for. The problem is, and the problem that we're addressing with our proposal, is that for the past four years, the number of operations for Airplane Design Group Two, the larger ones, has been substantially over 500. Namely, there have been 575, 625, 532, and 638 operations respectively in the last four years, according to the official data from FlightAware and from the FAA. So the airport meets the design requirements for Design Group One aircraft like the Beech Baron, but not for the Design Group Two aircraft like the Pilatus. Design Group Two aircraft are larger with wingspans over 49 feet, generally turboprops and jets rather than propeller planes. They require more stringent airport design features for safety, required by the FAA. There's, the standards for an airport that supports those planes is much more stringent, requiring longer runways, longer zones in case there's a problem, and so wider runways and so on, that Chatham does not have, and that Chatham Airport cannot have. It's physically impossible, given the geography and the residential surroundings of the airport. It's not possible for Chatham Airport to meet the design requirements for these larger planes. So the airport just continues to put its neighbors in harm's way. And no one seems to be addressing this. With all due respect, no one in the town government or the airport management seems to be addressing this. The FAA doesn't seem to be addressing it. And so the citizens have gotten together, and there are quite a bit of, quite a number of citizens in Chatham who would, who support this type of action that's just been ignored for years. And so, for instance, these planes, the larger planes are often charter flights, and they would want to land even in poor visibility so that they can keep their charter schedules. Well, poor visibility landings require even much more stringent design of the airport. Don't forget, our airport doesn't have a control tower, for instance. It would require clearing of large runway protection zones, much larger than the current ones, which are themselves already problematic, where hundreds of homes and businesses now exist. These large planes carry large amounts of jet fuel, which is potentially disastrous for residents in an accident. Airplane, airport plans continue to push for clearing of trees and other measures to encourage charter use of the airport. This is not in the interest of Chatham residents. Instead, requiring Design Group Two charter flights to use Hyannis Airport nearby with its control tower and longer runways is much safer for pilots, passengers, and residents. The proposed bylaw, unlike current airport plans and policies, would indeed, quote, "maintain the character of Chatham as a small airport that primarily serves recreational pilots while improving safety and security for residents and aviators alike," as promised, but not as delivered yet. I hope the town representatives will support this proposed bylaw, which would increase safety and realign airport operations with FAA safety regulations and with the desires of many Chatham residents. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anything else, anybody else from the public that would like to add their comments or support or thoughts? Comments from the board?
Can we hear from the, I see Mr. Huntley.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, I didn't know you were on, yeah, go ahead, Huntley.
Huntley, you're muted.
Yeah, we can't hear you.
I've been here a while.
There you go. Now we can hear you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, frankly, we've been down this road before for years. This petition is kind of a culmination of that. And with all due respect to the petitioners, I'd like to say, first of all, that the Airport Commissioner, Commission is showing concern for the citizens. We are trying to clear trees. We are trying to make the approaches safer. We are doing everything we can to, to make that airport safe within the limits that we have. The grant assurances that we have with the FAA and Mastot are the items that we have to, you know, follow. And the grant assurances say that because we are part, because we have taken money from the Fed, federal FAA and Mastot for various projects, and the fact that we are a part of the national airspace system and a public use airport, we do not have any say over the kinds of aircraft that come in. The FAA is the organization that can dictate that. Now, I know this argument about Design Group Two and so on. He said that, Mr. Stahl said that there are six times as many turbine aircraft that come in here than Beech Barons. Well, we have very few Beech Barons that come in. The Design Aircraft Group, the Beech Baron, happens to be the most demanding type. But there are all sorts of other aircrafts, aircraft in the Design Group One that come in. And the fact that the Design Group Two aircraft is inherently unsafe is not necessarily true. We had, the, the Pilatus that come in have an extremely safe record at our airport. And to say that it is inherently unsafe to the citizens, I, I think is a fatuous argument. The, we are not encouraging, as they say, we're not encouraging larger aircraft to come in. If they think we're clearing trees for the larger aircraft, that's also a fatuous argument. We're clearing trees so that the current aircraft of Design Group One and also Design Group Two, in fact, any airplane that can land safely at our aircraft can do so without worrying about hitting trees. We are improving our navigational aids to, to help that out as well. That's part of, part of our, our improvement project this year. So, you know, the other thing that I, I want to mention is that I hope everyone understands what an operation is. An operation is one landing and one takeoff. So when we have, say, 600 operations or 500 operations or whatever it happens to be, divide that in two, and that's the number of airplanes. So if you average that out, that's not very many airplanes that come into this airport over the period of a year. If it's 500, let's say it's 600, that's 300. That's less than one a day. Now, granted, in the summertime, that increases, maybe two, three, or four a day. We've also had very good success with the charters, charter companies, to reduce early morning landings and takeoffs, or late night landings and takeoffs. And we're still working with them in terms of trying to find places for pilots to come in in an evening for an early morning flight and find lodging locally and maybe provide transportation for them to get there. So we're working very hard to do our best to accommodate not only the safety of the airport, but the citizens, and also to accommodate the aircraft that do come in and utilize our airport. The, the, the airplanes that land, the FAA would, they know what our operations are. And if they felt that it was unsafe, they probably would have told us a long time ago. And the airplanes that land at this airport can handle our runway. They're designed to handle short field runways. And they, they have a good safety record with us, as do other airplanes, the Cessnas that, that are used for training and the Cirrus aircraft that are owned by local pilots. We've had a good safety record, knock on wood. So I, you know, I think because of the grant assurances, I think that's, that's really one of the major thrusts here that we have to abide by. And I also would like to say that regard, with regard to bylaws, there's a history that the FAA and, in terms of just the state, we'll talk about just the state, the Attorney General has historically said that it will defer decisions to the division of, of division, meaning Mastot and the state, in the case of the state, on those determinations, and routinely disapproves bylaws that conflict with federal or state grant assurances. There's case law for this. I mean, it, it's unfortunate that, that the, I understand the angst that these people have, and, and I appreciate the fact that they want to put the bylaw on the warrant. And that's fine if they do. They have that right. But they need to know that this bylaw, from not only the state's point of view, but also the FAA's point of view, and there's case law for it, is illegal. It's, 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 it does not hold merit. And from the FAA's standpoint, they would say the same thing. And we have two legal opinions on this, one from our lawyer, Anderson Krieger, and one from town council. And, and they both say that basically this bylaw does not have standing and is basically not legal. Thank you. I'll take questions if anyone has one.
Do we have anybody else with their hand up in, in the public? Jill?
Yeah, Ms. Gibbs.
Uh, Ms. Gibbs?
Yes, thank you. I'm not going to repeat what I had said at the beginning. But I think Chairman Harrison said it well, that this has been going on for a long time, and yet nothing's changed. And again, I think to look to the FAA and say, well, if we had a problem, they would let us know. I think we've learned within the last six months that the FAA and the Mastot, they have problems, and they're being investigated. There have been safety issues. And the fact of the matter is to point to legislation and say, well, there's a law that says you can't do that. I think if, if, if we can't get this passed, then we need to do something to fix it. We all know there's a problem. I think that we've witnessed what a plane crash looks like, what the devastation is. If we have a plane crash in West Chatham, today at the Finance Committee, you know, the question is, well, have we ever had a death? Well, is that what we have to wait for? Do we have to wait for a charter flight? And the fact of the matter is, the, the airport manager has all kinds of deals with charter companies. And they're bringing in plane, he has the right to do it. And there are, he's being advertised, contact us to land your planes here. And that's immaterial at this point. Charter planes are coming in. They have 10 people on them potentially. And if they go down, in addition to the deaths on that aircraft, there's going to be devastation, catastrophic devastation on the ground. I already, you know, spoke of the statistics where most of the accidents happen on takeoff and landing. So if this isn't going to solve the problem, and you have admitted that this has been going on for a long time, then you need to find an answer. Instead of trying to discredit the people who have concerns, to try and dismiss them as nut jobs, because you have, that's, it's been in the press. I, I, I mean, the Airport Commission writes that all the time. I don't live there. I'm not going to be directly impacted. But it's time for the people, public safety is really important. This has been on the top of the agenda nationwide. Mastot, even though they're in charge, they report to the, they seek guidance and receive funds from the, the Federal Department of Transportation. So, and the FAA takes guidance. So I think it's time, if this fails, that you guys work together and you come to some accommodation. We do not have to have big planes coming in here. We just don't. And we don't have to have them at the frequency or after hours. We're a non-towered, at-dusk airport. And something's gonna happen. And I hope we don't go, okay, let's, let's do something now because people have died. So that's all I have to say. And, and certainly it should go to town meeting and let the public debate it on the floor. And again, I have no skin in the game. I don't live there. But I do appreciate the concerns. It is a highly congested area, and it's going to get more congested with the affordable housing that's going in there. And not all airports are equal. They just are not. Chatham is a small, densely populated area. And so I think working together instead of being adversaries would be the way to go. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Comments here on the board?
I would like to respond to the, to the AC, if I may.
Please.
I'd just like to reiterate that my argument is based on the FAA statement that not, that once, once you reach 500 operations, and I think the FAA knows what an operation is and doesn't have to be reminded, once you reach 500 by a plane that is larger than the design of the airport supports, then you need to do something. That's what this, this proposal is trying to do. It's based totally on that FAA requirement. FAA requires, as I, as I said, a number of design features for these bigger planes if they're going to be using the airport regularly. And those features have not been put in and cannot be put in probably. And so this, the only solution left is to not allow those larger planes to come in. It's a compromise solution. We're not saying, close the airport. We're saying, keep the airport the way it's always used to be, and the way you claimed it was, is a small airport for, for private, small planes. it was, as a smaller airport for, for private, small planes. But don't, don't try to hide the fact that you're hoping to increase the number of large planes coming in every year, and, and think that you're pulling the wool over the citizens' eyes.
Well, if, if I may, I'm going to make a couple of comments here. I, I, you know, and Huntley has expressed sympathy, you may not quite see it that way, but I really think that there's an understanding, and by the way, I counted them, I think you have about 110 signatories to your, to your petition. Clearly, people want some relief, they want some respite, and, and this is a proposal that is, that has been developed to, to try to address that. I, I would point out that this proposal went to town meeting, I think it was three years ago in 2022, and was voted down. And I, I don't cite that for any purpose other than to say that, you know, this is not a case where everybody's ignoring you and you can't get heard on a proposal that, that addresses your concerns. You, you had that three years ago, it was voted down. I, I, at, at the risk of, of, you know, invoking the Shakespearean injunction to kill all the lawyers, you know, there may be solutions to your, what, what, what you're trying to do here, but we have legal opinions from competent and independent counsel for both the Airport Commission and the, the town that say that these bylaws, this bylaw, just can't, can't be implemented. And I'm, the only reason I bring that up is that we've had experience here in Chatham with spending a lot of money litigating, I mean, literally spending lots and lots of money litigating something that just didn't, didn't pass muster under the law that governs. And so I, I, I know there's a provision in one of the opinions that says the board has the authority not to put something, to decline to put something on the, on the warrant that, that doesn't, that, that doesn't pass muster. I'm not in favor of that. This will go on the warrant. The only issue is what is the board, what does this board do with it in, in terms of recommendation? And that we have to decide. I'll take suggestions from my colleagues here. I, I think it's a decision that probably ought to get the whole board involved, and so I'm, I'm going to suggest that we, unless there's a, a problem logistically with our putting it off until next week. But, you know, let's see what all five of us have to say. I, I will be honest with you, again, at the risk of invoking the kill all the lawyers, as a public official, I, I don't feel comfortable either recommending or promoting something that, you know, I've been told doesn't, you know, doesn't comply with the applicable law. And I, I, I know you personally know that I've, I've been, you know, very involved and, all over what's going on with the airport and the Airport Commission. I, I, I really want to try to be, address the concerns here, but I want to do it in a way that's, that, that pardon the term flies. So I don't know if anybody else has a comment. Yeah, go ahead, Dean.
No, I just wanted to ask a technical question. So, and I'm fine with having the entire board discuss all of this, and, and obviously next week will be a very beefy meeting. But, so you're just saying you don't even want to take a vote to even place it tonight? You want to move forward?
I, I don't, it doesn't, I don't think it needs to be placed because it's on by virtue of the fact that they have the tent. So the only issue here is what our recommendation is.
Okay, alright.
Yeah, I mean, if we had to vote to place it, I would vote to place it, but we don't.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, Dean.
Yeah, I, I wanted, I wanted to talk about, and I'm fine with putting this up next week, I think that makes, makes a lot of sense. I wanted to ask a question, I guess, of Mr. Stahl. Have you, or do you know of any others that share your thoughts on this? Has anyone approached the FAA directly and inquired as to whether what you see as a problem is a problem in their minds?
Yes, there are quite a few other people around town who agree with my approach. And some of them have gone directly to the FAA as much as they can as private citizens. It's a Kafkaesque task to get, to talk to the law and FAA, apparently. I remember years ago, the Select Board Chair, who was no longer on the Select Board, but he kept promising that he would go to the FAA represent, or with the Select Board or by representing the Select Board. As far as I know, he never got there. But I know of a person in town who has been struggling to contact the FAA about this particular law, about the 500 large planes a year limit, and what can be done about it. The FAA doesn't keep such accurate records as, as you would hope, apparently. Maybe with the new administration, they will be more computer literate. But I got ahold of their records of landings that the FAA keeps, and it took me days to figure out how many operations there were in one day of all the different planes. So they don't keep summary, so they don't even know, as far as I know. No one at the FAA knows that the 500 limit has been breached for four years. We also have people who talk to other, other lawyers and get other opinions. It's not an open and closed matter that this bylaw would be illegal. It's a matter of opinion of different lawyers viewing different case law and interpreting them differently.
Okay. Thank you. Is that, I wanted to ask Huntley, has, has the Airport Commission had any interaction with the FAA on this issue?
No.
Wait, Jill, did we not have a meeting at Barnstable Municipal Airport several, several years ago where representatives from FAA were there, or was that just Mast dot that was?
It was the FAA?
It was the FAA, and then, and I think that was for skydiving, but I think also when Peter Donovan was the Chair of the Airport Commission, I think Tim Roper was the Chair of the Select Board, we did go to Boston for a meeting with the FAA.
Okay, and that, that could be done again at any time? I mean, we could request meetings of the FAA if, if we so chose and with concerns?
I just wanted to make a couple of comments on lawyers and legal opinions, I happen to be one. And I, I respect the comments that have been made, but I can tell you, I, I served, as most people in this town know, I was city solicitor for the City of Quincy. I was an employee of the town, I was on the staff, I was the department head. I attended every meeting of the City Council, which was the legislative body comparable to the town meeting, which is our legislative body. And I advised the mayor, and I advised all the department heads. I attended every meeting of every committee of the City Council. And on multiple occasions, the clients, the client was the city, sought my opinion on whether a proposed action was legal or contravened the law. So I think as the Chairman said, we have to make a determination as to whether we're going to make a recommendation in favor or against this article at the town meeting. And town meeting, I should think, would want to know the legality of what is being proposed to them. So what is the tool for us to make that recommendation? I'm not town council here, I do have opinions and thoughts, I think Mr. Shell does too. So I look to the, the person or persons who are put in place to give us that advice. And it's true, they could be wrong, but they are authoritative. Now, I read the opinions, I read the legal opinion that circulated, we got, I don't know how we got it, but it was in my, my mailbox about two months ago from an outside attorney that expressed opposite views. And I'll just say as an aside, and I'm not an aviation lawyer, I found the opinion of Anderson Krieger more persuasive. I did not research all the cases, I was familiar with one of the cases that was cited, I think I had read that some time ago. So I've always taken, and I've stated it publicly, that when town council advises this board, even though I might disagree, and I might push back for further clarification, I accept what's been, being said as the best advice for me to consider going forward for the town. And in this instance, as, as Mike said, we, we have an opinion, we have two opinions. One, one is from our town council, saying that they think that this would not be legally valid, and I think I have to go with that. And I'll point one other thing out, which I don't think is discussed in either opinion of our town council or the special town council advises the airport. The, the article goes on to direct the town manager, or instruct the town manager to direct the town council to challenge any ruling by an agency, which would include the Attorney General. And I have, I think that's probably not mandatory on, on the town, because under the charter, I think that's an executive action, and I think under the charter, that, that falls within the discretion of the executive branch of town government, which is this board and the town manager. Town, town meeting is the legislative branch, so I think there's a, I personally think there's a flaw in that, but I'm not trying to pick this apart, I understand the underlying issue. So I guess we're going to discuss this again next week, and we'll defer our decision on that. But I, I have, I certainly have no desire to exercise what apparently is, is our prerogative. I, I didn't know it existed until I read these opinions. To not put something on the warrant, I, I will not do that. I don't think the Select Board should be picking and choosing which petition articles should go on the warrant. I think once you get the 10 signatures, it goes on the warrant, and let town meeting decide this. So that's my, my feeling about this and, and the other petition articles that we're going to have. We, we were given a petition article last week, and we had an advisory from our town council that that was legally flawed. So, and we're going to hear some more going forward. So I just really want to say that, I say that respectfully. I do think interaction with the, with the FAA on, on this and other issues that concern the citizenry, and the neighbors especially, is probably the path to go, short of, you know, the type of litigation that we got involved in last time, when, you know, people filed complaints with the FAA and we had to litigate them. And then there was a lawsuit on the skydiving issue, which I, you know, I think nobody really liked. Those are my comments, I'm sorry to have gone on at some length, but I, I guess because I was a city attorney, I felt it important to clarify what, what I see was the role of that position. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, I, I, I think we've probably exhausted the issue for this evening. I, I do want to say one other thing in light of your comments, Dean. And this addresses something that, a little bit that both Mr. Taylor said last week and Ms. Gibbs has adverted to. The, the, the Select Board and Council are, are not in the business of figuring out ways to decline to accommodate efforts at petition articles or anything else. And I would, I would point out, among others, most remotely, that when we had a petition article to create a $200,000 fund to make sure that people who had trees that needed to be cut, that it, that it would not be on their nickel, would be on the town's nickel, first of all, that petitioner got help with framing the article itself, and then the board decided to put, to, to amend the bylaw so that we could ensure that if the petition article passed, the, the, the Airport Commission would have the authority to spend the money and thereby effectuate the, the purpose of it. There's another one that where there was a problem with a petition article where a very simple change moved it from illegal to legal. And, and that's going on, that'll be a, we'll probably hear that next week. The, the, the objective here is to, to make it possible that whatever goes on the warrant actually, if it's passed, can, can, can actually be implemented as a, a new governing regulation. Maybe we should see if we can work with the, the Airport Commission to have some kind of a conversation with the FAA. But at the same time, I will tell you, I, I want, you know, Dean's given you experience, I'll tell you, one of my very quick experiences as a, as a lawyer representing a client in front of the Securities and Exchange Commission, the client wanted to hear what the Securities and Exchange Commission had to say. We sat down, they asked the question, and the Securities and Exchange Commission looked at him and said, you've got a lawyer, let him tell you what the law is. And I, I'm not trying to, you know, push this off or whatever, we have lawyers who are telling us what the law is. So with that, I'll, I'll, I'll let it go for this evening, but we can renew it next week, although as, as Shereen said, it's going to be a, it's going to be a busy, long meeting next week. So thanks for your, for your participation and, and presentation.
Thank you.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. All those in favor, Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Shell says aye, and Mr. Castro?
Aye.
We are adjourned at 7:53.